Welcome to the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Tonight is Thursday, March 10th. We have one hearing before us tonight. It's an application for a variance to construct a 12-foot by 20-foot shed at 71 Walnut Street. David, could you please read the public notices?
To the Town of Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing Notice, please take notice that a public hearing will be held on Thursday, March 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM by the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals at the Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass., to consider the variance application of Jeffrey Rodriguez for property owned by the applicant located at 71 Walnut Street, Oxford, Mass., Assessor's Map 33D parcel G09 in the R-3 Residential Zoning District. The applicant requests a variance of the minimum side yard setback requirement set forth in Chapter 10, Table 4 of the Oxford Zoning Bylaw to construct a 12-foot by 20-foot shed and further in accordance with Chapter 40A, Section 10 of Mass. General Law. The application can be viewed in the office of the town clerk or Land Management Department during normal business hours. Anyone designing to be heard in this matter should appear at the place, date, and time designated or submit written comments to the board before the date of hearing. See masspublicnotices.org for legal notice. To the applicants of the Zoning Board of Appeals, you are hereby advised of the following provisions of Oxford Zoning Bylaws. Appeals. Appeals to the Zoning Board of Appeals must be filed within 20 days from the date of order of decision which is being appealed specifying the grounds thereof. Variances. In order to grant a variance from the requirements of this bylaw, the Zoning Board of Appeals must find that all of the following conditions have been met. There are unique circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures that especially affects such land or structures but do not generally affect the zoning district in which it is located and that a literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, but not of a personal nature to the petitioner or appellant and that desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the purposes of this bylaw. In accordance with Chapter 40A, Section 15 of the Mass. General Law, you are hereby advised that any person aggrieved by the decision of the board relative to this matter must file an appeal as provided for in Section 17 of said Chapter 40A within 20 days after the day of the filing of the decision in the office of the town clerk.
Thank you, David. I want to invite the applicant, Mr. Rodriguez, to come up, sit at the table. I want to just go through the packet, make sure we all have the same paperwork. Mine was stapled, so the order is the application page on the front stating this is in our three district and placement of a 12-by-20-foot shed. We have the legal notices that David read. We have a statement from Treasurer Collector's Office that the taxes are current. We have a copy of the quitclaim deed from 2016, two pages. We have a copy from the assessor's map showing that this is map 33D. The parcel is G9, I believe. We have a list of the abutters. It's most of one page, about 20. We have the denial letter for the zoning enforcement officer explaining the reasons it was not granted a building permit and that they could apply for a variance. We have a letter from the applicant which I think clearly explains what he's trying to do and some of the issues as to why it needs to go in that location. Goes on to the second page, then we have a satellite picture showing the property and the location of where the proposed shed would go and at the end of the driveway. All right, so Mr. Rodriguez, why don't you take this time and... I'm sorry.
Normally, there's a highlighted...
It's that one that's dark.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I thought the same thing. Why don't you let us know verbally what you're trying to do and if there's any additional information you want to offer?
Good evening, guys. So what I'm trying to do is we have very little storage space. My wife owns, you know, runs a home daycare in town and...
Sorry.
We don't have...
Sorry, there's a hornet that just landed on Al's paperwork there, but...
You guys are out already.
You want me to kill it, Al, or you want to...
It's not a good sign.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's all right. So we don't have a lot of storage space. The base, finished basement is used as the daycare. So to store a lot of the daycare belongings, like the outside toys, they're being ruined leaving outside of the weather. So I would like to put a 12-by-20 prefab shed that would be, that would come delivered, put in place of, you know, right on the corner of the driveway there. It would match the house, same vinyl shutters. It would have windows, a man door, and a front overhead door. So it would look like a nice, you know, garage, but it's a prefab shed.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open it up to the board. If there's any questions, I'll start here, David.
I just, can you come on up for a second? I just want to make sure that I'm looking at this correctly. So this is Walnut Street?
Yes.
And this is your driveway?
Yes.
And this is the side yard setback in blue or teal?
Yep.
And then the back of your property is fenced in?
Yes. So the back of my property, you can't see in that picture. So my only issue is that side setback, which I have spoke to my neighbors there, and they're okay with me putting a shed there.
Now, what's the reason there as opposed to further into the property?
Closer to the house?
Sure.
Like I stated in my letter, I want to give enough space for... So the daycare entrance is this back door here to my porch.
Gotcha.
So I want to give enough space for everyone to get by there.
And what's this here?
Grass. So there would be about four feet of driveway left as like a walkway to the back.
So you'd like to try and keep the grass where it is as opposed to having that be where people trample over to get into the daycare?
Yes, so it would be easier to place the garage where there's already a flat surface, so it's an asphalt driveway versus if I bring it closer, you're in the way of the walkway. If I move it forward, then it affects my distance from the front. So I figured that...
Oh, thank you. Thank you for putting that up. So is there going to be a foundation or is this just sitting on top of the land?
No, so it comes built like a shed. It has a, it's on four-by-sixes in three-quarter inch plywood, and they deliver it on a flatbed truck.
No, but there's no foundation. It's not attached to the land. It can, if you were strong enough, you could pick it up.
I could take it with me.
Was the... If something is movable, is a variance necessary?
I think if it's considered permanent after...
It's considered a structure.
Even though it's movable, it's not, it's not permanent vis a vis a foundation?
That was my argument as well.
I mean, even a carport, one of those temporary...
A carport is considered a structure.
Well, a carport is put into the ground, so I can understand that. You know, it's not meant to just sit on the driveway.
So building code requires a building permit for any shed larger than 200 square feet.
Okay, that's what it is.
Considered a structure.
Because of the square foot size. I got you, okay. And...
But according to our zoning bylaws, a shed that's under 200 square feet, not zoning bylaws, building code, if a shed is under 200 square feet, it does not need a building permit, but because it's still considered a structure, it needs to comply with the setbacks. But even if it's under 200 square feet, it still needs to comply with the setbacks.
That's interesting, especially if it's a movable structure.
Anything that'd be considered movable, but if it's there for 20 years, how movable is it?
Well, if there's a foundation, then it's, then while it can be moved with the foundation, it's meant not to be moved. So there's a difference, but okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you for helping.
All right, thank you, David. Al?
First of all, I noticed on the deed, there's two names on the deed. Everything you signed, the permanent applications only has one name.
Okay.
I would prefer that both names be on there so that both parties who own the property are aware of what's happening. Not here, but...
I'm assuming this is your wife that's on? And, but it's, I guess I would say maybe this is what caught Al's eye is that her last name is listed different than yours on the deed.
That was before we were married.
Okay.
When we bought the house.
So maybe that's a condition, Al, just to have that signature to make it?
I would say we should accept what's on the deed when they make an application so that both parties that are owners or potential owners are in agreement to what they're trying to do.
All right.
Even though I'm confident here that they're in agreement. I would like to see plans of the dimensions of the shed. Now, maybe if it's movable, they don't have plans, but when we got what we got, the information we got, we wouldn't know whether it's movable or permanent. But I'd like to see, I was kind of concerned, and he addressed some of it when he gave his talk, but I was concerned at how high it was going because if it went up two stories and blocked neighbors' view, that would make a difference in how I was looking at it.
Yeah, that's one of the questions I had was the height as well.
I have a picture of what it would look like if you guys are interested. It would look something like this.
So something like that I would like to see in the record.
In the past, I think that we have, I think the, we've had attached manufacturers' plans or specs. Yeah, 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 we've seen that before, yeah.
So it sounds like, it sounds like, Al, you have a couple of conditions to start that you'd, no matter what we do tonight, it would be contingent upon producing, you know, another signature and just a brochure of what the dimensions and...
Showing it to be a single story.
And that kind of, because years from now when there's new members here, it could get revised and build a second deck up on top.
Completely understand, and I think he's...
Or a sun porch up on the roof.
Yeah, okay.
In your presentation, you stated that the septic in the backyard would not support the weight without having made a site visit. And this is the type of thing probably could be answered from a site visit, but I'd like to see, if I made a site visit, I'd want to know exactly where the septic is located. I'm trying to make a decision whether it's capable. It sounded like it went downhill anyway, but that would be something from a site visit that we could pick up as to why it couldn't be in the backyard. But there's nothing, nothing in the presentation. The picture, I can't tell the height of the yard, what level it's at.
After the white fence, it drops down and it drops down gradually towards the wood line.
And it's not that, and I had mentioned this about the site visit, whether we could make site visits beforehand and go on a property because I drove down the street, but I couldn't see the backyard or kind of relate to what it was.
I think in my mind, you probably shouldn't be going...
They've written so many laws for, I'm sure abuses, but sometimes it makes it harder for the board to do their job properly, too. It lengthens the whole process. That's unfortunate.
You shouldn't go and do a site visit before the meeting.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
You know, if you want to knock on the door and ask if, you know, it would be okay with them, that's a different matter.
I don't even think you should go and make a site visit before. I mean, driving by the street is fine, but not going on a property until after we have the hearing.
Putting, sorry, excuse me, putting it further back, as again I stated in my letter, it would cost more money to be able to do that because I would have to take down the white vinyl fence, the black chain link fence that's behind the white fence, and level off the yard in order to set it back. And that still doesn't change your side yard setback.
I don't think the cost of anything should come into our determination of whether it's proper or not.
It can't.
Well, I thought, I mean, there's different hardships, financial or otherwise, right?
Unfortunately, a financial hardship that's personal to the applicant is something that even though we would want to take into account, I don't believe we have the right.
Isn't any financial burden on the applicant personal in some way?
I get it. I get it.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm saying is without a site visit, I couldn't tell where the septic was in the backyard.
So are you saying, Al, you don't feel that you can vote without a site visit? And you would like a site visit?
That's basically what I'm saying.
Okay. So it sounds like, I mean, we will continue with other members and we'll continue with the hearing, but I'm just hearing that there's a couple of conditions, you know, a signature, a brochure, which is going to take a little bit of time to produce, whether it's a day or what have you. But it sounds like Al would like to request that we do a site visit, which, again, it's a public hearing. We would set a date and a time that's acceptable to you, and we would just come and look at the property. We're not allowed to deliberate at this to make any decisions. We're really just on a fact-finding mission to look at the layout and put some 3D to what we see on paper. But normally, and we would have to find, again, something that the schedule fits with everybody here. We used to do them on Sundays. Today's Thursday. I don't know if that would be amenable to people to do it Sunday or I'm open to any other days, but we can talk about that date and time a little bit down the road today.
And it would be kind of convenient to know what a septic system is, kind of stake it out or something.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
I believe we looked for your septic system. Information with the Board of Health's office, and there wasn't anything. Is that correct?
I'm not sure if we did or not. I've been in here so many times, I... There should be.
Something that I think we did not file. Did you have a Title V done when you purchased the property?
Yes.
That might show where the things are. I mean, the site visit may show that by your description, but we've got to deal with the whole town and neighborhood.
2016 is the deed.
Right, yeah.
Have you ever had it pumped?
You had a mortgage?
Yes.
So it should have been a Title V.
Have you ever had the septic system pumped?
Yes.
Well, then that should tell you where it is.
I know where they, where they empty out the septic. I don't know the layout of the tank in the leach field.
Keep going.
But I mean, if you got the, if you know where they pump it, you got an idea where to start, and then you can go from there. And the leach field typically will go back away from the house. You know, 99% of the time. So if you're directly behind the house, you've got tons of room off on the other side of the fence in the backyard.
All right. It looks like you got a list there, Al. Why don't you keep going?
In your statement, you said your wife runs what I'd consider maybe a home profession out of the house. What age is these people that are coming to your house?
What age?
Are they children? I read in the first, I thought, oh, this is great. These senior citizens are coming and taking home care. But is this more of a nursery school type?
Yeah, it's a daycare. It's for children, so for...
Preschoolers, preschoolers and...
And younger. Her youngest is one years old, her oldest is five.
I would like to make sure that the building inspector is aware of that. I mean, we can't really make a decision whether it's legal or not. I think it is, but I'm not sure. I'd like to have the building inspector confirm that that's legal.
I mean, it's saying that the entrance was approved by the state.
That, no, that particular home profession isn't allowable use in that zone, residential zone.
Well, they would have to, they would have to, my understanding, apply to the state agency. State agency would come out and do a site visit and render a determination as to whether they can operate. Am I too far off?
No, no, that's what they do. They have their permits. The father's letter. But they said that that's really the building inspector to make a zoning decision. Some emergency on these phones we bring in.
I'm not following you, Al. What does that have to do with whether the shed, garage, whatever you're going to call it, goes there or goes some other place?
Well, no, no. Talking where it goes is one thing, but talking whether it should go even where it's proposed. If it's in Hanson, would the use, if it's, if the use is allowed under zoning, that's one thing. If it's not allowed under zoning and it's pre-existing, that would be another thing because putting a shed is probably allowing more of the house to be used for the preschool and whatever, nursery school.
But I guess I'm just, I'm not following why or how that's related to whether he should be putting a shed there.
My understanding is that there's going to be stuff stored there given more space in the house to have more occupants and students.
All right, Mary.
Under our zoning bylaw and a home occupation, a home daycare is an allowable use as a home occupation.
Is there any? I would still like the building inspector to make that decision, but...
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Is there any other qualifications in there? Is the size, is home care?
Can you answer that question if you'd like? She's licensed by the state for seven, for six kids. So she has six kids every day by the state. The state comes and inspects the house whenever they want. So we went through everything we had to do before we started the daycare, and everything was approved. Doing the shed does not give the daycare any more space for children. The, everything except for the bedrooms is licensed space in the house by the state.
The bottom line is you're just looking for a place for storage.
So this doesn't change the number of children that can go there? It sounds like, and I think that's what you were wondering, Al, that it would allow an expansion of the daycare?
Read the paragraph, and then he wrote the, "The main reason I want me to place this further from the home is our licensing home daycare. My wife runs a licensed home daycare program. I have seven families in total on our property on a daily basis. Monday through Friday, the daycare entrance is our rear side entrance. This is what has been approved by the state in the U.C. Town License, and if the shed is on the inside edge, it doesn't give adequate space to pass safely, especially during the winter months." So, I mean, he introduced it.
No, no, but the way I read that, maybe I'm not reading this correctly, but he's talking about the people that it's seven, they're licensed for seven, for them to enter and exit, dropping off and picking up their kids. If he had to move this proposed shed over towards the house to be inside of the legal setback, it would, it would, it would create more of a bottleneck there and not give them a lot of space to enter.
No, I'm saying, what I'm saying is he introduced, Dave was kind of saying, how does it get into the discussion of the shed?
Oh, okay.
He introduced it.
Okay.
That's what, I wouldn't...
No, no, no.
He even had a daycare if he didn't bring it up.
But the question you, the question you raise, you want the building inspector to make a determination. The building inspector, I mean, I'm sorry, but literally has nothing to do with why we're here. The building inspector isn't going to come and say he can't have a daycare business. It just can't happen, so...
Well, if it wasn't allowed under the zoning, that's what I would say.
Well, first off, it is, and second off, it's, it's under the jurisdiction of, and I'm sorry, I can't think of, the Department of Little People.
Easy.
I'm sorry?
Education.
Sure. They come out and they look and they, they make a determination, you know, how many, how many kids there can be and whether everything is proper and appropriate. So whether he's looking for storage for the daycare or whether he's looking for storage for his own personal reasons, I...
It's not going to change the number of children.
It's a distinction without a difference. It's storage. You know, you could call it, he's going to store widgets. In my opinion, it doesn't matter what he's going to store, whether it's business-related or not business-related. That might be something he could bring up with his tax accountant. But for purposes of this, to me, it's not, you know, I don't care what the purpose of the storage is.
If the intensity of use of the land was involved in the state portion of it, and you were on the state making up the rules, would you want to know whether someone's using the property in a different manner than what it was originally?
But he's not. He's looking for...
He's putting up a building. The kids can't go out in the yard and play. I don't know what could happen.
He's looking for storage. I'm going to take him at his word he's looking for storage because the shed certainly looks like storage. It doesn't look like he's going to, you know, do an Airbnb out of it. You're not doing Airbnb, are you? Okay. So, you know, I take it at his word that, you know, he's, he's looking at it for storage. So really, in my opinion, whether it's business or not business, is it an okay area? Or would it be better, easier, however you want to put it, to go elsewhere? You know, that's where your suggestion about wanting a site visit comes in.
I've got all my stuff in. That's it.
Okay. Dan?
Thank you. Good evening. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Okay, thanks. I had the same, similar questions as far as the septic plans. It would have been nice to see where everything was situated. As you, as you stated, if we do a site visit, then we'd be able to, might be able to understand a little better. But as you pointed out, if it had to go in the backyard, you'd still need some relief, a setback relief anyway, so thank you for that. And I'm not sure, I'm asking the board. You have neighbors at 73, so I imagine that's, they'll be the closest to the building?
Yeah, they're the garage right there.
And you, you said that they agree with this and they're willing to write a letter or appear in person? And I don't know if, I mean, I've seen letters before. I don't know if that's something we can make a continued that we at least get that letter. I don't know if that's something we can make a continued, that we at least get that letter. I don't know if that, if that is something that would be good, I would like to see that, just so, you know.
I mean, we know that the abutters were notified.
Right. That was just what jumped out to me. But you, they have been notified, so that's, that may satisfy that.
Is that something that, that you're gonna, you would like to officially request?
I, I think, just for, you know, future boards, future, you know, to see like what happened at this time, that you actually, there was actually a letter from the neighbors stating that, that, you know, they're okay with this plan moving forward. Just because they are the ones closest to that shed.
Yep. They did have...
His garage would probably be closer to the property line than the shed would be.
Understood. And what was the amount of relief you were looking for? It's gonna be three point seven feet from the marker, from the side yard?
From the, the line, yes.
And the setback is, is fifteen, correct? So you'd be looking for eleven something? And then Dave, you had mentioned in the past that when we do the setback, that we wanna...
Should round.
What's that?
You should round it off because you don't wanna be, well, you're two inches, so you gotta take a big knife and cut two inches off the shed.
So we'd be looking for twelve feet of relief then?
Yes.
Just, I just wanted to bring it up. You, I learned that from you, so it's good to know.
I learned that from him in a couple of meetings ago today.
Yeah, right, right.
I thought you looked familiar.
I wasn't here, I was watching on YouTube.
Oh. So you're the one who watches?
Yeah.
So, my, my mom watches and she'll be talking about this after, so, oh, good. That's all I have. Thank you.
All set, Dan? Bob?
When you, when you were talking about this, this deal that you wanna put up, okay, several times in your conversation, you've mentioned it as a garage. And I noticed in the picture, it's an A-frame structure with a garage door. And it is twelve feet wide and twenty feet deep. Are you planning on using this as a garage or a, or a shed?
In a shed for storage, but in the future, if I put a car in there, is that an issue?
I, I don't know. I'm just asking a question. I don't know if that's an issue or not.
Yeah, I, I drive a Expedition, so I don't think it would fit in there. But down the road, if I buy a motorcycle, I thought I could put it in there, or a car.
I don't think there's any distinction, Mary, right, on the, on the building permit?
Is it a garage and a shed? Absolutely, yes.
Absolutely.
Garage is definitely more of a permanent structure. A garage needs a certified plot plan. Would have to have a foundation. Would have to have a concrete base.
To have that support.
So you couldn't park a car in there, is what you're saying?
If it has a wooden floor and it's got a combustible floor and combustible sides, then it would, you would not be able to park a vehicle in it. We actually just permitted a shed and the building inspector specifically put a condition that it was not to be used to park the vehicle, right?
Yeah, you, you don't wanna pull a vehicle in, even if it's not a combustible situation, and just crush the floor.
Yeah, I, they're built to hold the weight of a vehicle. I know that. It's warranted for thirty years to hold a vehicle. If not, they come out and replace, and that's one of their...
So like a six thousand pound vehicle?
Yes.
Wow.
And, you know, you put a, a lawnmower, a snow blower in a shed, that's combustible as well.
Now, you said this shed is gonna be delivered, complete, right?
Yep.
Where you're, where you're purchasing this shed, do they have any engineering documentation on this shed as far as like snow loads, the roof and things like that that are gonna come into effect, I mean, without it collapsing into itself?
I'm sure they have all that information. They're a big outfit out of Pennsylvania, so it would be coming seven hours away. It's not someone just building it in their shop and bringing it over on a trailer.
Is it all two by six construction?
It's, the floor is two by six, the sides are two by four, sixteen on center.
I think one of the questions, Bob, someone had asked earlier, is we're probably gonna be asking Mr. Rodriguez if he can just get us a brochure of, from the company, whether it's, you know, something from the website or something that shows the dimensions.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Some of the ones that I had thought of have already been asked. I do appreciate the satellite shot. I think that's helpful. I also drove by there today. The structure that's there now, it's like, that's like a carport or a portable storage thing?
Yeah, I have storage in there and the roof is blown off many times. I have a tarp over it, 'cause I don't have no other space to have some dry storage.
What's the size of that currently?
Ten by ten.
Ten by ten. So you're basically going twelve by twenty, ten by ten?
Yes. If you drove by, you probably saw my snow blower outside, 'cause I don't have space for that.
The, I did read your thing about it coming on a mule, and then one of the questions I had was whether there was footing or, or anything, but it sounds like it's not. It's just gonna rest on the ground on the pressure-treated wood that's on the bottom of this?
Yeah, the four by sixes.
Okay. And the height of the shed? We saw that it appears to be one story. Again, do you think, do you think you're gonna be able to get us just a brochure of some kind, or print out of the dimensions maybe from their website, or?
Sure, I'm sure they'll give me any information you guys need.
And the other thing that I heard was to have your wife just sign the application as well. How many times did you have to come to Town Hall? I think I heard you say earlier, you've made multiple visits.
Multiple times, just to make sure that everything was right.
How many times, do you think?
I don't know, Mary. How many times have I come and seen ya?
Four.
Yeah.
Just to make sure his application was completed.
Okay.
Make sure the next time you bring her a nice cup of coffee.
I was, I was gonna do that after this was all done, believe it or not.
Do you have town water there?
Uh, yes.
Town water and septic. All right, I think that's what, that's all that I had for questions. I, I thought we would probably resolve this tonight. It sounds like there's appetite that we'd like to do a site visit as a board. Is that...
You okay with that?
Whatever you guys need.
Is that, am I, I'm understanding that correctly? That's what we would like to do?
You can, sorry. Again, there, site, you know, in the backyard, I really don't see how it would work, having to be fifteen feet from the side, be in twenty feet from the back, and it working. But you guys can go check out the yard as often as you want.
Well, we would, we would, we would schedule a specific date and time. Al, did you have any thoughts on that? What time would you wanna go? Does Sunday morning work, does Sunday morning not work for anybody? I forgot what time it is.
I'm, I'm good. I don't think I need to have...
Yeah, not everybody has to go. It's only if you, you want to go and look at it.
I, I think I'm okay without a site visit.
Okay. What do you think for you, Al?
Yeah.
What, any date, time?
No, I'm happy without a site visit.
Happy without it? You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I don't think we need a site visit then?
Okay.
It sounds like, I, like I said, I drove by, I'm comfortable looking at it. It sounds like a couple of the people have said they're okay without a site visit, so...
If I may, Mary wanted to get your attention.
Would you like me to run a walk?
If you could, please, to find the as-built?
Health office and see if I can find the septic?
That would be helpful, yeah. So let's take a one-minute, couple-minute break and while she does that...
Thank you, Mary.
Mm-hmm. Are you guys officially...
Can I ask him another question?
No, not real, well, sure.
Yeah, we're gonna go out and play.
Sure.
Can you say recess?
Could we take a three-minute recess, please? Bob, do you have a question?
Uh, yeah. If, if we were to look in the backyard, what, what is the grade behind that fence in the backyard? In other words, if you were to set, if you were to set the front of this garage where, where you go through the fence?
Yep.
Looking in a straight line?
Yep.
Okay? How much would you have to build up the back of it? And twenty feet completely?
Yep.
Twenty feet, how much would you think you'd have to build it up?
Probably two and a half, three feet.
That's not bad.
All right, all set?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, if they were, I've seen those sheds built up on like railroad ties and landscape timbers, and if you're not using it to put a vehicle in it, it would take the, they're made for that, you know?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the...
Depending on what you, what the use is, you know, you could build, you can build them up with railroad ties or landscape timbers, okay, underneath them.
To, to keep them level, you're saying?
Exactly. As long as you're not, as long as you're not putting a vehicle on it. That's, that's a game changer if you're putting a vehicle on it.
Sounds like a place for little kids to try and crawl under.
Well, you'd, you'd fence it off underneath. I mean, well, that goes without saying.
All right, so Mary, Mary went and she was able to find the latest Title V, which has the, some information on it, so I'll pass that down. There's no other members of the audience here, in the audience here tonight.
What do you call them?
Trenches?
Trenches, yeah.
Does the board have any other questions of the applicant? Otherwise, we can probably...
Do the kids play in the whole backyard?
Yes. So the whole backyard is fenced, the black chain link that you see across the, you know, the back of the driveway, that's an area, fenced in area, that my dog can only go to.
I, I'm sorry, I, the black chain link, can you come up here and show, or actually show us on there?
I think it's this right here.
I, I thought so too, but I wanna make sure. Okay, so that, that's a run for your dog?
Yes, this here and here, so the dog can come out of the porch, it's fenced in. She stays here while the kids are back here.
Gotcha. So you'd have to move two fences to just get back?
Yeah, that's what I had said, yep. And build up a grade.
All right. So I'm getting prepared to ask for a motion to close the public hearing, but once we, once we do that, we won't be able to ask any further questions or take in any input. So just ask a last call. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Questions, Bob?
No.
Okay. One sec.
Guys, have any other questions for the applicant? Anybody? No? Okay. So, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing and then we can deliberate?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second. And the vote to close the public hearing, Bob? Yes or no to, to close the public hearing? Okay? Okay?
Yes.
Dan?
Al?
Al?
Um...
Did you wanna continue to talk, Al? Did you wanna continue?
I have no more to say. It's obvious we're not gonna make a site visit, so...
Well, if I may, Al, if, if you wanna do a site visit, then it's important for you to do a site visit.
I can't vote for this project the way it is, so...
So you want a site visit? Then I, I think it's important for you to have a site visit. Just because other people aren't looking to have one doesn't mean you shouldn't have one.
I agree, Al. I would've gone too. Even though I've driven by, I would've gone to the site visit, so it wouldn't be just you there.
See, seeing the septic plan now, I, I would, I would be in favor of going for a site visit as well. And with Bob talking about the grade, it would be interesting to see.
Yeah, that would feel a lot better for you.
Okay, so let's not close the public hearing.
Anything else?
I, I withdraw my motion.
Well, you don't even, you can just vote no.
No, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Both, motion withdrawn, okay. All right, so that means we're gonna ask for a continuance of the meeting. We're gonna continue this to, is next Thursday open?
Next Thursday is open.
Okay. Anybody have a conflict with coming back next Thursday?
I may have a conflict, but my, my daughters and husband just flew over to Germany and I gotta their dog to take care of and I've been getting calls on the phone.
Okay, so...
I think they're coming back on Thursday. I don't know what time.
Okay.
Is there any other, any other night we could do it, or, 'cause I, I have something going on. The third Thursday of every month, I have something.
Okay.
I, I don't think we can hold it on any other night. Mary?
Not typically, because it would just, it may interfere with established boards meeting on, on those nights already.
Do we know what the schedule is for next week for other boards?
I don't. I'd have to look at a calendar. I know the finance committee will be meeting on Wednesday. Planning board is meeting on Monday. Thursday nights is set aside for CBA.
So next week is the eighteenth, that's the third Thursday. So the twenty-fifth then. Can, can the applicant make March twenty-fifth, two weeks from tonight?
Sure.
Is today the eleventh of the tenth?
No, I think it's the, I think that...
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, right?
Twenty-fourth. X. All right. Anybody ha, can everybody make it on March twenty-fourth, two weeks from tonight? Yep. Al, think you can make it two weeks from tonight? Okay.
Are we, what deadline are we running up against?
Um, I believe it's seventy-five days from the date of the...
Application?
...application.
January twenty-seventh, so February, March, it sounds like into April, mid-April.
Well, I have another, just because this was dated, the twenty-seventh, doesn't necessarily mean that I received it on the twenty-seventh.
So it may be later than that.
But at the same date?
Um, it probably was the next day.
Okay.
So it's close.
So anyway, seventy-five days from the date of the...
All right, so we're not, we're not running into that.
All right, so in, in two weeks, we don't have an issue.
Yeah, typically it's seventy-five days from when, when it's scanned in by the town clerk.
Okay.
And that may not have been until the next day.
So before we make the motion to continue this hearing for two weeks, let's talk about when we can do the site visit. Does the applicant have any, any timelines that would be, obviously, we wouldn't wanna go during weekday when you've got all the kids there and such, probably.
They would have to be after five-thirty on Monday through Friday.
All right, and it's, we are changing the clocks this week, but almost dark at five-thirty, but, oh, I don't know, maybe, but how about Sunday? Does...
Sunday would work for me.
Does Sunday work for you, Al? 'Cause it sounds like it might be three of us, maybe Bob. I can make Sunday. Do you wanna propose a date and time or a day and time?
Sunday's, for the day is any, I guess.
Is there any time Sunday morning, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, that's okay? We would obviously just be coming to the outside, we'd be viewing, looking at the driveway where this is proposed, probably looking over into the backyard.
Do I have to be there? Cuz I plow and salt, and I know we're getting some snow Saturday night, early Sunday morning. Uh, so if I don't have to be there, then you guys are more than welcome, but-
We have the, we have the as-built, that was one of the questions as to where the septic is, we, we have that by the plan. I, I'm, it's pretty clear to me where it's going.
Will your wife be there? Sorry to interrupt. There should be a homeowner there, or instead go on property.
She, she won't.
Then there shouldn't be a site visit then.
Okay.
They, they, a homeowner should be present.
Yeah, I, I'm totally fine if it isn't for the weather, but I, I do know that, that we're getting something-
All right, any, Saturday morning, about set? About, is it gonna rain this Saturday, or?
Yeah.
Saturday morning, I won't be able to. But that's okay. I would, I would like to go to the site visit, I don't absolutely need to go. I haven't done that, I know you talked about them before, but I don't absolutely have to be there. But Saturday afternoon would work, but it sounds like it may be bad weather.
All right, so this meeting, we're gonna be continuing this meeting for two weeks from now. If it's not this Sunday, do we wanna shoot for the next Sunday, the following Sunday? The twentieth, Sunday the twentieth.
We're going into daylight savings this weekend.
Agreed.
And after five o'clock at night, when the daycare is closed, uh-
I'd be, I'd be willing to do that too, Al. Any weeknight this week, after five o'clock, okay, or, or do you want?
Five-thirty, right? You said five, five-thirty?
Five-thirty. Any weeknight this week?
I think all night, sure, all right.
Okay. Pick a day, Monday?
Monday at five-thirty?
We'll do tomorrow at five-thirty, I don't, you guys pick.
Today, so, how about Monday the fourteenth at five-thirty?
Oh, no, I, I'm sorry, I can't. And I'm the one that mentioned it too, sorry.
Tuesday, Tuesday the fifteenth, five-thirty. Yes, yes?
I don't, I don't think I could make it on Tuesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday?
Wednesday the sixteenth.
Wednesday the sixteenth?
Don't say Thursday the seventeenth. Wednesday the sixteenth?
Not that time, I couldn't make it either.
Okay.
Sunday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, I don't know.
What time do you think's plowing on Sunday?
I don't know, depends on the weather. I wish I didn't have to plow on Sunday, to tell you the truth.
I thought we were just gonna get rain and then terribly cold on Sunday, I, that's what I received. Night flowers, well, and-
Thursday the seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day.
I, about, uh, Sunday afternoon, it should be done by one, twelve, one.
If it snows, I don't know whether we can see what we're, we can plow, though. But doesn't snow.
They're not talking about snow.
Do we wanna just go to Sunday the twentieth? Sunday the twentieth?
Sounds good to me.
I can't remember what time we used to meet, it's been so long, nine AM or ten AM? I think we did it fairly early.
Yeah, probably about ten.
Ten AM. Does that work for you, sir?
Sure.
Sunday, March twentieth, ten AM, okay. Can we have a motion, um, to have a site visit? Sunday, March the twentieth at ten AM. Anybody wanna make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we'd visit the site on the, uh, twentieth at ten AM.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, and the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Sure, why not?
Yes, okay, and now we would need a motion to continue this hearing to Thursday, March twenty-fourth, seven PM.
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, and the vote? To continue the meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay. So, we'll ask, we'll plan to be there, uh, Sunday morning, the twentieth, ten AM. I don't think it'd take probably more than fifteen minutes, I-
So what was that Thursday site, uh, Thursday?
Thursday the twenty-fourth, seven PM. And just a reminder, I think that there's some appetite to see if you could produce some kinda plans of the shed, a brochure, and have your wife sign the application form as well. Just get us one copy of that is sufficient. Just, you know, one copy of the front page with her signature on it as well. And I think I heard Dan ask maybe that, uh, in your letter, you talked about the neighbor. Is there any way you could actually get them to write just a, you know, a one, a couple sentences, just what you're stating in the letter here?
Sure.
Yeah. I think, any other things that we could envision asking for, so we wouldn't have to ask him again after the fact?
I would like that, the plan that we saw, a copy of that.
Copy of the septic?
Copy of the septic, okay. All right, so is that something, Mary, you could help with?
I can certainly provide that.
Okay. Maybe we can even get that tonight, cuz it sounds like that would be helpful when you're on site. Okay. All right, so we've continued, uh, for two weeks from tonight, you're free to go for now, and we'll, we'll see you at your, at your home on the twentieth.
All right, thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if we're gonna get into other business tonight. I know you had the fee increase on the-
Right.
Gender again. I'd kinda like to have maybe the full board here when we do that, just to get all-
As I stated in, um, the packet that was nailed out, I hadn't had time, um, to do any further research on, on the fee.
Okay, fair enough.
Don't wanna proceed with conversation, I'm okay with that.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, is, I haven't seen Tom in a while, is he okay?
He's fine.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, oh, for the, for the winter?
For, for a period of time.
Oh, okay.
We're still on public here. Anyways, um, is there anything else anybody would like to discuss? Bob, do you have any other questions for us?
No.
No? Um, Al, anything you needed to talk about? All right, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And the vote to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, thank you, good night.